This is our special meeting. I'm calling to order, Commissioner Banks, you can go ahead and lead us in our vacation.
Father, we just thank you today for your loving kindness and your multitude of mercy and compassion. Thank you for how good you have been to us and continue to pray for our community. In this commission, we act this in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, thank you all for being here tonight. This is a special meeting that we're calling. And I really don't have any announcements, except for I want to encourage everyone to come to the Art Farmers Market this weekend from nine to two. And with that, Charles, let's go ahead and get started.
Are we gonna do the public comments?
If you want to do them first, we'll do them first, okay? So at this time, we'll open up for public comments. Do you have any public comments regarding anything not listed on the agenda? Please by all means come forward, state your name, state your address, and you have three minutes. Um, nobody's coming forward, you're gonna come forward? You're welcome to come, you can come up and speak, this is your opportunity. Welcome. Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Cheryl Smith, and I live at 1206 Habitat Way. I saw the trash can that they're proposing to have. And I'm wondering how is it supposed to get dumped into the truck?
That's gonna be on the agenda, so if you wanna wait, he can answer that question for you, but there will be time for a public comment during that item on the agenda, okay?
Oh, I jumped the gun.
It's okay, it's okay, hey, you got your feet wet. Look at it that way.
I get real wet, I'm good at talking.
You got your feet, you got your feet wet, so we'll invite you back up during that, okay? Thank you so much.
I shall be looking.
Okay, is there any other public comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna go ahead and close out the public comment. Let's go ahead and start with our second reading of the budget ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen, ordinance of the city of Crescent City for providing for approving and fixing the budget, setting the millage levy at eight point five nine one four, allowing for the general operations of the city and its various departments, approving and fixing budgets for special funds and debt service for fiscal year beginning October first, 2022, and ending September thirtieth, 2023. Mayor, this is the second and final reading of our, our new budget. There were no changes to the budget at first reading. Recommend the meeting.
I make a motion that we adopt the second reading of ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen.
I'll second. Okay, we have a proper motion and a second. Commissioners, do we have any discussion?
My question.
Okay.
Yeah, my question is for the city manager. Under expenditures? I see Better Place Plan that says we're spending seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand five twenty-four.
Yes.
Is that correct? So, first of all, where is that money reflected on the left in revenue?
Same column, you see that we have a large, very large carry forward, five hundred eighty dollars and, five hundred eighty thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars, and the new revenue would be one forty-six, seven seventy-one, and some interest in that.
Wait, that's, okay, one forty-six, seven seventy-one, that's shown as charges?
That's, that's the new revenue.
Okay, the new revenue for Better Place.
Yes, that's the tip tax.
Okay, but is...
And that adds up to seven twenty-seven.
Right, but it's my understanding that somehow the new accountant, that it's not just Better Place, but that's where the ARCA money is being accounted for?
It was there, it's now in the water fund for those water projects.
All the ARCA money is in the water?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, but we have not obligated our Better Place plan funds?
We have not, other than generally, I showed you some infrastructure.
Right.
Some broad categories.
So are we, I mean, by this budget, are we required to spend the whole seven hundred and twenty-seven?
Well, no, in the breakdown, there was actually a contingency amount, so this just records how much we expect to work with, and then we have it all budgeted.
And in my...
Contingency.
In my understanding, though, I mean, we're approving your budget, and a lot of times, some of this money doesn't all get spent, correct?
That's why we have such a large carry forward.
Right, well, I mean, hopefully.
So it doesn't, I know, but...
Okay, but I just wanna clarify, we're, we're voting on it, this is going out the door here. So, Charles, I'm sorry, just point me up, where, which line is the water fund that has the ARCA money in it?
Well, if you look at... I think some of it's actually in sewer as well. I think she's got it under charges.
I thought she spread it.
Yeah, we had to divide some of it into sewer because the little station pump that we're getting, there's also a sewer project, we talked about oak wood and so forth, it's, it's divided between water and wastewater.
Okay, in the expenditure side?
Yes.
Okay, so some of it's in the sewer and some of it's in the water. All right, and up above, we don't know, up above it's in, we don't know where it is up above.
I think she's voting in charge, we're gonna have to ask her how she's got to realize that, let's see.
That's what I thought.
Okay, but actually, that's, that was some kind of carryover, right? Because it was actually income to us in a...
We received one check last fiscal year and one check this fiscal year.
Okay, so we, all right, but for the, for the fiscal year for which we're approving the budget, we've already received the funds, and they all carry over.
Right.
Yes, we have received all the money now that we're gonna get.
So, okay, just wanted to know where we are on the ARCA money.
Um, I know there's been a little bit of question out there. I hope everybody understands that, that we have kept our millage rate the same. That what happens is you have an increase in your property taxes. There's a lot of, people are planting seeds out there in the world of the, you know, with what we're doing, but it looks to me, and I asked, I asked Karen for, for my own information, to pull at least back to 2016, and we have had the same millage rate since 2016, and we have not changed that. That fund goes up and down based on property values. That's our ad valorem, that's our ad valorem income, so just wanted to make sure that we had some understanding of that, if anybody had any questions. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'm gonna open up for...
Actually, because you raised the issue of the millage rate versus... Okay, so, um, I think we all got the letter of someone saying that their taxes would go up, and they asked us not to raise the taxes. The mayor, you said we are keeping the millage rate the same. The taxes only go up if your poverty value goes up. And actually, another public official pointed out to me that if you're homesteaded, your taxes are capped at three percent increase a year. And as well, we've discussed in prior budget meetings that Crescent City has, we have a very large reserve, but we have a lot of unmet needs in water, sewer, roads, all that things. We've tried to keep the budget as fair as possible, and if we're doing a water or sewer or road project, we're getting a grant for it. So there's really, I think we're trying to be very thrifty with our expenditures.
And we have, and we have been, I believe, over the years, we have been, so anytime we have one of those big expenditures, we have to depend on those, on those grants, those individual grants, so. I just thank you for, for clarifying that, just a lot of, people don't realize that. Now, if they look at the trim notice, it'll explain a lot of that on the back of your trim notice. But your property taxes will go up unless you've, that three percent if it's homesteaded, but unless you have added something to that property. And then it can be assessed based on what addition you've done to that property. But by Florida statute, it's that three percent. Thankfully, on a good note, positive note, pretty much, I think, all of our properties have increased in value. And so that's a good thing, that's a good thing, there for a long time it was going down in value. So right now, everybody says increased in value, so with that, are we, any more discussion?
Can I say, we do have a good amount of money, a million dollars in reserves, and you go, why do we have so much? Well, we had the three hurricanes, Jean Francis and whatever. I, we spent eight hundred thousand dollars cleaning up Crescent City, and we had to borrow that money, and it took years to get it not only paid back, but with the interest you pay on that. So we have, Mr. Banks and I have been here a long time, and we said, let's see if we can't get a, a good fund that can take care of us. It's gonna happen again, we know it's gonna happen at some time, where we have major hurricanes hit us. Thank heavens, we haven't had any since then, but we wanna keep that in reserve to keep us safe. Just letting you know.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open up for any public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? If you do, please come forward, state your name and your address. Seeing no one come forward, good, that one closed public comments. Commissioners, we have a proper motion on the second reading of our twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and a second, all in favor? I'm gonna, Karen, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Barton?
Aye.
Mayor Mize?
Aye.
We have a budget, Charles, you can read easy on your birthday. Okay, let's move on to our second reading of special events ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-two, seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Crescent City for order creating chapter twenty-one special events, establishing procedures and guidelines for special events within the city of Crescent City, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative action, providing for separability, providing for conflict, providing for codification and directions to the code of fire, providing for an effective date. Mayor, this is the second and final reading of the special events ordinance. There was one small change at first reading, it's highlighted on the second and last page. We added the term, the phrase, "Such fees and costs may be amended from time to time by the resolution of the city commission." At a regularly scheduled, partly-nearly-public hearing, so that we didn't need to pass on the ordinance or the change of fees. Recommend approval.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion?
I move that we accept ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen.
Sir.
I think we have a proper motion and a second, do we have any further discussion from the Commission?
Mayor, I'm a little nervous about passing this ordinance because there are two different versions that have been distributed, one's in our packet, one's on the table. It's a very long ordinance.
The ordinance in your packet is the one that's been distributed and published, that's the one you're voting on. The one we tried to distribute was to take out the edits, so we had a version we could sign, and it wasn't correct, so the one we're voting on, and would always be voting on, is the one in your packet.
Right, and just to clarify, I think there were other changes at first reading. Didn't we increase a couple of fees in there, and we corrected, I think, at first reading?
We, we did that after the workshop, so you approved first reading with those changes.
Like the public work went from fifteen dollars to thirty, would you please turn me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Silence your time, thank you.
I'm gonna try to silence it a minute. So I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned, at one, at one point, there was a mistake in what came to us at first reading, and we did make that change. I, I don't know, and I'm, I'm not entirely in favor of adopting something like this that is a special meeting. I think it would be better if we did the second reading at a regular meeting. So those, those are my concerns about this, but anyway, so the one, the one that we are going to adopt is the one in our packet. That's the one that...
Okay, Commissioners, any further discussions? I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone who would like to come forward and speak, please state your name, your address.
Tracy, I'm here at 109 North Prospect Street. I know that you've had workshop on special events, this is the second reading. Seems to me like everything will be hashed out. Which five of you, you don't like it, you vote no, you like it, you vote yes. I hope you all vote yes.
Thank you very much, do we have any other comments?
Scott King, seven twenty-one on Madison. Park ordinance, did we, did we drop a group C, or whatever that we called it? Did we, did we change that so we don't have to come for, we had talked about that originally?
No, we kept...
No, we kept it. We kept C.
It's in there, but also the smaller events, we, we didn't, Charles, you want, we didn't... I don't know where my copy got stolen, I'm so sorry.
We simplified it a little bit.
We simplified it, yes. And we left that in, and if you're doing those, the park permit?
Well, we left, we left park permits in chapter five, where you're just doing a birthday party. You get a park permit like you always do.
Like you always do.
But those other small events still need to come, special events would need to get a special, that class C special event permit. Yeah, many folks had, had voiced that that just seemed to be too much. I think the basis for that was, was parking and how much, if it, if it overstepped the parking you had available, you had to come in and take the permit, that's basically the criteria for C, wasn't it? Those events that have a limited impact on traffic, parking... Those events that have a limited impact on traffic, parking and noise in surrounding neighborhoods and do not exceed the capacity of the facility or other property proposed to be used. And so that could be at your home, right? No, it's. It could be. These events may involve, but are not limited to, private use of city-owned or controlled property and are not open to the general public. And also include fishing tournaments regardless on races with less than 40 boats. So it's just a little tiny event. You know, you can have a gallery in a park or just. We have you, city, city, city property, city. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comment? Okay, seeing no other comments, I'm gonna close public comment at this time. Commissioners, we have a proper motion and we have a second. I'm gonna do, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
I count it.
Mayor, I'll note we brought all these second readings back tonight because they all have fees associated. So we'd like to get that squared away before we read the fiscal year.
Go on to the.
2022?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022, an ordinance of the city of Crescent City, Florida, amending Chapter 2 of the land development code. General amending section 2.7, P schedule, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementation of administrative action, providing for application of prior acts, providing for conflicts, providing for complication and directions to the code of fire and providing effective date. Mayor, this is the second and final reading of these changes to our land development planning and zoning fees. The one change at first reading is highlighted in yellow on the second page. We had not printed them in a small scale. It's still, it's a thousand dollars and the intention was to make it $300 plus $100 per acre over one acre not to exceed a thousand dollars. So we added that here for the second and final reading.
Okay.
Staff recommends approval.
Okay, commissioners? We have a, we have a motion?
I submit that we set 2022-20.
Second.
Set every.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, commissioners? Yes, ma'am?
I just, again, I'm not really comfortable adopting, adopting this at a special meeting. I think it, to me, would be better at a regular meeting so that more people would be aware.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any further discussion? Okay, this time I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Please come forward, state your name and your address. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna go ahead and close out public comment at this time. Commissioners, if we have no other discussion, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay.
Ordinance 2022-21, an ordinance of the city of Crescent City, Florida, amending Chapter 13 of the code ordinances, amending section 13.4 violations and penalties, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementation of administrative action, providing for separability, providing for application of prior acts, providing for conflict, providing for complication and directions to the code of fire, providing for effective date. Mayor, this is the second and final reading of this ordinance to increase the fines for violations of our noise ordinance. There were no changes on first reading. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Do we have a motion?
I submit that we accept ordinance 2022-21.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and this is one I say we bring it up as soon as possible. So I'm glad you did put it on this agenda. It's very important to everyone, so thank you for doing that. Any other discussion?
No, just to say, yes, I agree, this is in the nature of emergency. We've heard a lot about the need for it, so I think it's.
I'll open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Do you want to just let them know what the findings are?
Oh, okay, so for those of you that were not at the last meeting, I thank you, Commissioner West. So as you know, noise has been a major issue here in the community. It's, it's an issue every, with every community. Every community, that's probably the number two complaint, traffic ban, I mean speeding being number one. So what this ordinance does is it gives the authority for them to, for either Pam or code enforcement or our deputies to go out, give them a warning the first time. The second time they show up at a residence or a facility, they can give them a $250 fine. They can fine both the person, the property owner, and they can fine the person holding the party if it's somebody separate and different from the property owner. And then the third time, they can go out, they can fine them $500. And, and that's again for the property owner and the person holding the party if it's somebody different from the property owner. So hopefully this will help. It's not going to stop it by any means, and we still have to have, it has to be measurable. And they have the equipment here, I believe, to take care of that now. But still, it does help us, it gives us a little bit more teeth and, and hopefully it will discourage, you know, especially once they know, once they know that. And so with that, okay, commissioners, any further discussion?
I just would like to say, the people who brought this to our attention, a number of members of the public said they were late until quite late and put up with the noise. And I think the recommendation is that the noise is really out of hand to go ahead and report it and not wait for it to be 1:00 a.m.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
To, to allow law enforcement to actually address it. You know, there's administrative time to get there.
I get phone calls Saturday evening starting at about 7:00. So hopefully this will take care of that because at 7:00, people are in their homes and they're trying to enjoy the privacy of their homes. Okay, with that, commissioners, we have a proper set, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Ordinance 2022-22, an ordinance of the city of Crescent City, Florida, amending ordinance 2018-04, natural gas rating ordinance, amending section 7, meter installations, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementation of administrative action, providing for separability, providing for application of prior acts, providing for conflicts, providing for complication and directions to the code of fire, providing for effective date. Mayor, this is the second and final reading of this ordinance which would increase our fees for new gas service installation and directional boring to match what our cost is. Increase items, staff recommends approval.
Okay.
Can I just make a motion first?
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance 2022-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, yes, ma'am?
For instance, we're, we are charging right now $250 for new gas service. Our actual cost is $400. So what we're doing is moving fees to actual cost and not upping the fees because we think it's a good idea. We're just trying to make the fees to what the actual cost is.
Plan to recapture those. Do we have any other, thank you for that clarification. Commissioner West, do we have any other discussion? Okay, I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Scott King, 721 Lemon Avenue. Might not have the people here to answer this. When we turn on the new gas service, do we, the city, check the fixtures inside? Is it, is it our responsibility to check the fixtures inside, make sure they're not leaking and they're hooked up properly? Or do we know that? I don't know the answer to that one. Thank you.
I know you have to check on, I believe, on the outside.
Usually whoever installs those, we install our checks on for leaks and so forth. The one, I don't know that we do on there and double check it. It, it says in the ordinance that the city does not perform anything on the customer's side of the gas. Thank you. That's where that's coming from.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment. Commissioners, we have a proper motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay?
2022-23, an ordinance of the city of Crescent City, Florida, amending Chapter 12 of the code ordinances, business tax registration and regulations, amending section 12.12, local business tax amount classifications, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementation of administrative action, providing for separability, providing for application of prior acts, providing for conflict, providing for complication and directions to the code of fire, providing for effective date. Mayor, this is the second and final reading of the ordinance to restore our business tax receipts to $50. If we charge you $35, I guess we'll be drawing down this one, restore them to $50 on the previous rate.
To the previous rate, okay. We want to make, I just want to make sure, well, let's go ahead and have a motion. Somebody wants to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the second reading, amending cap number 192022-24.
Number 22-23.
No, 23.
23, right.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? I want to make sure that, that everyone, I think there's been some, I don't want to say misinformation, but there's some information out there and it was proposed at one point that we would have a garage sale fee and we do not have. I think somebody said that it was, we were char, looking to charge $10 for a garage sale fee, but we did not actually put that in here, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody knows, out there in social media world, that we are not charging for a garage sale fee.
Mayor, it was in the packet in the form of a staff memo.
It was, it was a recommendation, yes, it was.
They didn't make that up.
Yeah, I didn't say, I did not say they made that up. I said it was discussed because it was a staff recommendation. Okay? My buzzer is done, so I'm done.
But you need to get, come in and get permission to have the yard sale. We at one time had three a year because some people were linking into business and that's not what we would like to see. But if you needed four, maybe you can, you know.
But yeah, but there's no fee, there's no fee attached to it, no fee attached to it, so, okay. With that, any other discussion?
Actually, I have a question.
Yes?
Yes, about the ordinance. So there was confusion over whether we really needed the ordinance because it currently says $50. When it was up on first reading, I said, why are we enacting it if it, the ordinance says $50? And I was told that there was a resolution somewhere that lowered it to 35. So my real question is, why do we need the additional $15? And do we, I mean, is it costing us money to issue these business tax receipts so that we need to charge 50?
And again, when restoring it back to 50, it was 50 several years ago and, and.
Right.
And they changed it to 35. They lowered it to 35.
But I'm saying, does it, I mean, the licensed fee has to pay the additional amount. I know there are some people who, tradespeople who will come here to do a single job and they have to get a business tax license. But I mean, does, unlike the gas installation, is it caught, and, and the, the land development code changes where there's actually staff work involved, does it cost us money in terms of $50 to issue the business tax license?
It, it does cost us money and staff time. If you're a tradesperson, you don't need a, if you're state certified, you don't need a state license, you don't need a business tax receipt from us. Karen, I recall what was the conversation. When we both arrived, it was, we were told it was $35. We couldn't find how that had been done, so we thought just to cover it, we did create this ordinance in case we missed, couldn't find the ordinance or resolution, just changed the fee. Suspicion it was done during the recession and was never restored. So there is staff time involved in, in doing these things. And so the recommendation from staff is to go back to what it was at $50.
Right, and I think also in here somewhere, we're raising coin-operated vending machines are going up from $7.50 to $10 bucks a machine. That's a fact.
Yes.
Okay.
That takes effect, Commissioner DeVito, that doesn't take effect until 23. The business tax licenses have already been sent out for the ones that need to be renewed. So that doesn't take effect until 23. Till next year. Next, till next.
Okay, till then.
No.
No.
Talking.
A year from now.
Yeah.
A year from now.
October. The notices go out in September, is that, or August, September?
They're supposed to go September 1st.
So this year, they're still at the $35.
Yes.
Thank you, Karen, for that clarification. Okay, any other discussion from commissioners? Okay, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. If you have any public comment, please come forward, state your name and your address. Okay, seeing no one come forward, commissioners, no further discussion. We have a proper motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Ordinance passes.
Mayor, the next item, I think I'm gonna recommend we, we move this to next month, do another reading of. It came to my attention that the commercial, proposed commercial rate of a three-month average should not make it into the text of the ordinance.
Okay.
So I have to, do we need to vote on putting that in tonight and then bring it back next week? Well, I think it was, it was supposed to be, it's already, it's already been voted on. To put it in there, just what, the one we added, that didn't have it.
So in the second reading?
So we'll do another second reading, third reading next month.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Do we take any action on that? No. It was just, it's in there now. The commercial deposit's $100 and it's supposed to be changed to a three-month average. It wasn't, but I would consider that a substantial change.
So we want to, since everything's been advertised, do we want to table it till next, till?
You have to read, you have to.
We'll read, re-advertise it and change the language.
Okay, so we need a motion to table that?
I make a motion to retable.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We get caught up here. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the, Charles, if you want to start this off with a waste pro contract.
Thank you, Mayor. This is consideration of a waste pro contract, which is an amendment to our existing five-year contract, which would extend it for another five years. Last month, a motion was made to, last, yes, last meeting, motion was made to reconsider the item tonight, tonight's meeting. So we brought it back before you. The motion last month, last meeting referred to option number two of toters twice a week. However, all the options are on the table tonight. No one wants to make a motion for a particular option. That's up to the commission. Though we did bring, rather than just vote last month, since we didn't go with option one, we decided to, we scheduled for the next meeting for more opportunity for the public to respond.
Okay, so we can entertain a motion for any of the four?
Any of the four options.
Okay, commissioners, do I have anybody that wants to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to recommend option four. So I'd like to make a motion to, to, to the option four.
For one pickup?
For one pick, one pickup a week and one pickup of yard waste. I use a 96-gallon cart and the cost for that's $15.15 a month, which really is less than what you would be paying, I think, for the, for the regular two-week pickup that we're doing now.
Two weeks, yeah.
Or they're extending to twice a week.
Mayor, I need to point out the, in my memo, I talked about the current cost is $14.25 per month to the homeowner, which is correct. But that includes our administrative fees. So the motion that was made for the $15.86 per month would include approximately $2 administrative fees. It would be 17.
$86.
Eighty-six, or probably about $18.
Yeah.
It's, I think the fee is $2.23.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion for one pickup per week with a toter. Do I have a second? Okay.
Don't want to.
Okay, motion failed at the last of the second. Sorry about that. Do I have?
All right, can I make a motion for option two? Two pickups per week of solid waste, one pickup per week yard waste plus the 96-gallon cart at $21.22 per month.
Okay.
For a home.
Okay, so we have a motion for two pickups per week with a ninety-six gallon toter. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second, commissioners, do we have any discussion?
Well, I do have a question about that. So, the, the option two, so the twenty-one twenty-two home per month, that is waste pro's card?
It's to us, yes.
Right, so there's an administrative fee on top of that?
Yes, so we're talking about twenty-three, forty-five.
So all of these would have a two-dollar?
Two-dollar, yeah.
All of these do, this is waste pro's increase.
Okay.
Right, so I have another question about this. I was looking at the ordinance says on waste pickup in Crescent City. Um, it seems that we've left out a step. We're approving the contract, but our ordinance says that rates will be established by resolution. So, we're about to enter into a contract with Waste Pro saying that we will, um, we will accept the increased charge, but we don't have a provision to actually raise the rate. We have to do that by resolution, I think.
Well, we wouldn't know, we'll be in the resolution until we vote on an option.
Right, but don't we need to, um, have that? Because essentially, I would imagine it's the resolution that lets us, um, I think that's nine point one six. It seems like there should be a resolution to go with each option.
Nine point one six of?
So you want them to make a resolution for each option? Is that what you?
Well, we can bring you a resolution. Once you choose, we'll draft a resolution.
Right, because I guess what I'm saying is we can't, um, it's one thing to approve the contract, but then we have to have a resolution according to our ordinance says to actually establish the rate we charge the customers.
And we, we can do that at the October meeting. We don't know what option we're talking about, what the service will be and the rate will be.
Right, but so actually, and this is something people didn't know before, whatever it is they see that we published as the rates, we have to add the administrative fee.
As I just explained, yes.
Sure, yeah, okay, well that, because that's very, that's very new information. Um, and as well, interestingly, um, we have an ordinance on books that limits residential container capacity to thirty-five gallons. It's been on the books since two thousand and seven.
So, so we bring that change to you next month as well?
Yes.
If you pass it tonight, if you.
If, if, we're bringing that change, thank you for bringing that to our attention so that we don't get ourselves in trouble.
And I have no idea how many gallons my trash can holds. There it is.
Most of them are, did you say thirty-six? Most of them are thirty-six gallons, the smaller ones are thirty-six gallons, mine is.
Right, I just, I have no idea, but that's on the books, um.
Okay, so, do we have any further discussion before we open it up for public comment?
Oh, I do have a question. Okay, so at the last meeting, we had people come who said that, um, they had long driveways or they were disabled. We talked about some kind of ADA provisions or we, there was talk about, um, people could have someone go get their trash can and bring it up the hill for a small fee. Uh, do we have any idea how many people are affected by the long driveways? And what are the ADA provisions or what would be the small fee? I really don't understand how that would work. Or is that actually realistic? Would people just have, if they couldn't do it, would they have to pay someone to bring their trash can?
No, communities, um, according to Dana, communities have done this. Dan, can you speak to it at all?
Yeah, whatever you need.
Would you come forward, please, sir? Um, and she said that they've set it up that it's either, depending on what fee we charge, that it could be twenty-five, thirty-five dollars annually if they meet those certain ADA requirements. But we would have to establish that program here and in the city.
In the county contract, we have one that's called backdoor service. And person sends us a letter, a doctor sends us a letter yearly stating they can't physically take it to the road. We send somebody to the side of the house to get it. We have several of those in the city of Crescent City already. It's one of those things that we do, you know, at no charge.
So you can do it at no charge?
We don't charge anything for the backdoor service. If somebody has a legitimate, I can't get it to the road. But that only pertains to garbage, has nothing to do with recycle, nothing to do with yard waste, but there's certain other guidelines, you know. You can't have ten people living in there and get backdoor service. You have to be somebody there that's disabled. And when I, when my guys show up, if you're truly disabled, you're only going to have a couple bags of garbage. You're not going to have five cans worth of, so, you know, it's a trade-off. We know we're going to pick up less, but we're going to go ahead and go pick it up for you. And we have a lot of those, I mean, some of them, we drive the truck right down into their yard. I mean, we have some in the county that, we have a lot, we have pages and pages of backdoor service in the county.
And we have no idea how many long driveways?
No, we, or, or how many people would, would qualify as having an ADA.
But they can call.
Yeah, they can call.
And they, they're going to have to go through that application process.
And he said there are already some in the city?
Yes, so.
But there's not that many long, super long driveways in the city of Crescent City.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody in the audience, you'll have your chance to speak. Thank you, Dan. Does that help you, Commissioner DeVito, that that's?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, great. Okay, commissioners, do we have any further discussion? Big change, changes, changes, change is hard, but hopefully, usually change is always for the better. Um, at this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. So if you have any comments, please come forward, state your name, state your address. I'm sure many of us have, um, I know I have been reached out to from several residents who have reached out to me, so, go ahead.
Daniel Sykes through Port Chestnut Street. Um, I've also reached out to residents by walking the neighborhood and getting people to sign a petition for those who want to keep our cans. It's, uh, sometimes it's a physical matter of, you know, being able to tote a toter and maybe not, not disabled enough to get somebody to move it for me, but I find it very difficult to handle something like that. I bought one, I have one in my area. I bought it two years ago, I thought, well, this would be cool. I'll have this toter and it'd be so much easier to get my garbage out there. No, it's not. So now that toter just sits in my backyard because I can't use it. And I prefer my garbage can, I, um, want my stuff further besides these potatoes, which I will pass around because my, I have a, I have a paint which I work on, so I couldn't make copies, but I'll pass it around. I also, um, took the initiative to ask my trash guys what they prefer. And management, I guess, prefers tooters, the guys who actually do the trash prefer garbage cans.
Thank you very much. It's, it's your turn now, come on. It's time. You'll state, Cheryl, you'll state your name and, and your address again.
My name is Cheryl Smith, I live at twelve oh six Habitat Way, Crescent City, Florida. I live on a dirt road, I'm the last house down. I don't have healthcare, I don't have a doctor, I broke my back two years ago, first two bird rights. I barely can put one bag in there. We've had bears down there, it was a bear last week, a seven-hundred-pound bear. And you think I'm going to leave my trash sit down there till I can fill that thing up? It'd take me probably a month. We don't have that much traction. I recycle, and what I don't recycle, I put in my compost can. And I'm not for this. To mention to pay somebody an extra twenty-five, fifty dollars on top of that thing and have to do, who's going to dump that? Me? If I don't pay somebody? That's what I want to know. Can the trucks pick them up?
Yes, Daniel was going, you asked that question earlier, I think Daniel can speak to that, Daniel sat down too soon.
Yeah, no. I do some extra steps today. On the back of the truck, there's this collar tipper. It works with a hydraulic handle, grabs here. And when it goes up, the whole kingdom flips upside down and back down there. This kingdom is falling off the tipper. It's a pretty slip movement.
I'll just knock the bears out of it, down there, because mine's down the road.
How are you keeping the bears out of your garbage cans now?
I don't. I have neighbors that can't throw their garbage in the can. They're dumping it out to keep the cats out, which only brings the bears. I don't do that, I don't leave my trash sitting out there three or four days. I don't do it. I don't take my trash out till the day of, like Sunday night. Dark, when it's dark, I take my trash down so they can pick it up early in the morning. Not to mention, I have to call every week just about to get them to pick up my recycling bin. Somehow, they forget, but they do come back and get it. But I'm not for that big heavy thing. I, I just cannot tote it and I don't have a doctor's excuse nor will I ever get one. So I guess I'm going to have to take and haul it myself. I guess that's the deal.
So, let me ask you, so you don't have a garbage can currently at your house?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so.
My own.
Okay, and what do you do that, where do you, where do you keep that? Do you have to take that out to the road now?
No, yeah, but it don't, it's not that size. It's thirty-gallon. And it's on wheels, but if not, I've got a dolly to take it down. But that thing with trash in it would be too heavy. And not to mention dirt road. There's a lot of mud, lot of places for it to get stuff. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're going to do what you want anyway.
Thank you for coming.
Tracy, I'm from Prospect Street. I spoke last time, I'll speak again that I'm in favor of the toter. My ninety-year-old mother uses the toter, she has no problem. Yeah, it is good. And, um, this nice lady who was just up here, I happen to Habitat Way and I understand that there are dirt roads, that's a whole different issue that, you know, maybe we shouldn't have dirt roads in the city. But, uh, the open trash draws bears. And in areas where that is a big concern, that you would go to bear-proof toders. But, all that open trash that's out there, mine are just attracting bears. The toders would solve that.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further comments? Any public comment? Yes, sir.
I'm with Ted Carmichael, four past four, uh, York Metro. First, I would like to acknowledge that the mish, mismatch of trash cans in our city is not aesthetically pleasing. I guess in some cases downright ugly, I acknowledge that. However, weigh the pros and cons of making the change, maintaining the current system is by far the better option. The overriding reason for this opinion is that the big trash cans are unsafe for a number of our citizens. I know this for a fact because a relative in Volusia County cannot manage her ninety-six gallon can. She has to, it has to be rolled over grass. Uh, the reason I say that is a while back, she strained her wrist significantly, I'm not going to say severely, but significantly enough to cause her to no longer move the can. Just too unwieldy rolling over grass. She's seventy-three years old, but physically, she's, uh, in better shape than the average lady of her age. But she will not, cannot move the ninety-six gallon can over her grass. And many of our residents do not have a level paved surface to roam cans over. In my opinion, it's inevitable that some of our older or, you know, somewhat handicapped folks will hurt themselves wrestling with a trash can that at times could weigh over a hundred pounds. I know of several older citizens who use walkers, uh, and, but they want to remand their homes. I talked to one today, actually, while I was talking with him at Lynn Dixon. And I talked to another lady, uh, a couple of weeks ago when I was working in the yard, she was passing by. So it's a fact, we have older citizens who want to remand their homes, they can't handle these ninety-six gallon cans. I could mention some other reasons, it looks like I'm out of time, so, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you for coming forward. Okay, do we have any other public comment?
Scott Keen, seven twenty-one Lemon Avenue. You guys already know this. So, uh, Monday, trash day, I jumped in the car and took an hour break before I started work and I drove the entire west part of our town from Palm to where Prospect bends at the, uh, View Campsite. And, uh, I took pictures and sent them to you. There were twenty-seven residents that, um, appeared like they had more than ninety-six gallons of trash. Some had toders with another can, some had toders with trash on top, some had two toders, some had, um, carts with three or four cans on them. Man, I, I wish this, I wish the, I wish the toter would work, I, I, I really do. I like the idea of things looking better, I, lined up all down the street would be pretty. My, my fear is, since I think a lot of folks generate more than ninety-six gallons a pickup, the toter will get dumped by the claw, by the machine, and then all that other stuff will sit there. I guess then we'll expect the homeowner to put it in the toter for next time, but unfortunately, he's still generating trash in his home. So, my, my fear is simple, that the ninety-six isn't enough, it looks like it's not enough. And that'll leave us with more trash laying around than we have now. I did take notice when I did that, there was, uh, of, uh, of all that area, uh, there was one trash pile that had been, I was, I was going to lay a dog, it could have been a cat raccoon, I don't know, but there was one, one house had trash that was strewn about due to an animal. Out of however many are on that side of the highway. So I'm not sure that we have that big a problem. I haven't had a dog with my trash in, geez, years and years and years. So again, I'm just, I'm just worried that while we're trying to make our town prettier, I'm a little worried that there's going to be trash left and, uh, that'll be even more unsightly. And, and again, with the way it rolls, you, you'll never be able to get caught up unless you quit making trash for a period.
Can I ask a question, Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be possible, if I needed a second one, to buy a second one?
Yes, it's a monthly charge. Usually there's dollars.
Here, Daniel, will you come?
Come forward.
Mr. Taylor?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Are you done?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I, I'm just, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm just trying to interject this to see if it's possible to get a second can.
Yes. The, the bill would just double for that house. So you would double an additional, instead of only one unit, you would double two units.
When you say units, you mean two services?
Yeah, essentially.
What if I don't need it every time you pick up? I just need it for occasion? No?
No, I'm going to jump back and forth because it's too hard to, you know, try to, it's many two guys. Get one this week, get two next week, get one next week, you know.
Well, I would be that way.
Yeah.
You had indicated the last minute, you're a family of five, with just one pickup a week, ninety-six?
I generate one, I generate one toter a week.
One toter a week.
There's five to seven bags packed up, yeah. And I don't even recycle.
So if you had two pickups a week, you wouldn't even use the second pickup?
Daniel, you know that's on record.
Well, this, this is because of terrorism. I take it to work sometimes, but the road I live on, I take terrorism trucks up and try to get down.
I understand.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't use a second pickup. For years, I didn't put garbage out at all, I just took the bag in the back of my truck every day when I went to work.
But you have a unique situation.
Yeah.
But for us, we'll have that twice a week.
I think it would work personally, you know, it, it's a, they're nice for us, they look great, you know.
I, I know, I cooked every night this week, unfortunately, because that's, that's not my preference. I know, I cooked every night this week, unfortunately, because that's not my preference. Definitely not my preference. And I, I cooked last weekend, I cooked this week, and I had one bag of garbage on Monday, and I had half of one today, half of one today, so, I mean, that's all, I, I, we just don't generate a lot of garbage. So I, I, you know, with families that do, you, five of them would go, five bags could go in that.
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, and ours is, you know, basically for adults, because my daughter's twenty and her boyfriend, you know, they, they pack their lunch every day for work the next day, they eat it home every night. So I mean, it's not just an occasional dinner at home.
So that can can hold?
Yeah.
Trash bags like this, can it can hold seven of them?
Mm-hmm. You put two in, and then you can put three in, and then you can turn two into five.
Well, we gotta do a little math, you know, if, if we've got an ordinance that says we can only have a thirty-five right gallon can, okay, and you've got three of them out there.
That's the same as a ninety-six gallon.
That's about the same as a ninety-six gallon toter, toter. So, and it's one thing that they have to handle rather than three.
I think.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
I, I think the biggest, the one that I seen, the lady that spoke and left, that the biggest situation seems to be that people are just not able, but to me, I, I think the one that we are signing tonight is two pickups. Am I correct or wrong?
Yes, two pickups.
That's the motion, two pickups?
Two pickups with a toter.
That's a lot of garbage. Two times a, a month, a week.
We have that now?
Yeah, that's what we have now.
Yeah, yeah.
I never put trash out on Thursday.
But maybe that thing is, that's a lot of garbage. That's a lot of garbage.
Do we wanna go back and consider once a week then?
No, no, two is enough. Go ahead, buddy, come on. We, we need to make up our mind.
Like, the mo, the motion right now is for two.
Yes, you do, and honestly, this is a change, this'll be a big change in its, in its own, and so I'm concerned that if we did that, that that would be, that, that would be, this is like, if this does pass, they can divide, you know, the garbage is not, they have two opportunities to take the garbage out for a week, so.
And, and I just want everybody to know, you know, Tracy and I, we help our neighbors with their garbage if they need it and vice versa. I mean, we, we always are very considerate with everyone. I mean, as a matter of fact, you know, our next door neighbor right now has, has a bum leg. I, I just got over one. So I understand that, but I, I think some of, some of it is just being neighborly and helping. You know, if you see somebody struggling pushing one of these waste pro's. I think the waste pro's are nice, paint and wheel, they're kinda like the Cadillac, but that's, that's just my, my opinion.
Karen, could I say something?
Yes.
So this petition that's been circulated, I see some names on here that are not actually Crescent City residents, but I know absolutely, there's at least twenty people who signed this who do reside in Crescent City. I recognize that many of them are elderly or disabled. So, and I did not count the people who are sitting in this room. So there's twenty people who said they don't want this. I, I don't understand, we're sitting here talking amongst ourselves about how much we like the toters and how nice they look, and this gentleman from Waste Pro was saying how fantastic they are. There's twenty people who have taken the trouble to sign a petition. Five people spoke against the toters last time, some of them came back again. We voted after testimony to keep the same system that we had. And I just don't know that it is our place to tell a significantly senior and disabled population that we think this is best for them, and they need to get used to change. I heard what Mr. Carmichael said, and I think he has a good point. These are not necessarily easy for people to manage, and I'm certainly not comfortable telling people that, um, good luck to you, because not only do you have to move it to the road, but you have to clean it. If a bag breaks, or you spilled kitty litter in it, or if you live on a heavily traveled road where people throw out trash, you can rest assured that they're going to be throwing their trash in what looks like a dumpster sitting out twice a week, and that will be your responsibility to clean it. That is not easy for an older or disabled person to clean. It's not easy for anybody to clean. And I'm not saying this for me, I know I said last time that I injured my shoulder at one point cleaning out a toter. That's true, I'm not permanently disabled by it. I did recover, it took a while. But I had the experience that it is not easy to manage. So we got twenty people saying we don't want it here, we're Crescent City residents, we got people in the audience. I, I just don't see where we're coming from telling them that we know best.
Here's my comment on this. You've got so many going house to house with one view, but where are they tonight?
No, I have, I have, I have, I didn't, I didn't just get.
I, I don't care, Diane, you're telling them what you like. So they're going, yeah, but they're not coming here and listening, is my point. I don't like this, I'm sorry.
Can I say this?
Yes, sir.
Old and kinky.
Mr. Banks, Commissioner Banks, that's his seat.
Can I say this? In Volusia County, time you go out of Bobble Hill, not Bobble Hill.
Seville.
Pearson, no, Pearson.
Then you go to Pearson.
Yeah, you can look down the road, and I stopped by one day, I seen people bringing, bringing out some smaller garbage and, and dumping it over into the, you know, the, uh, bin.
The toter.
Yeah, the, the toter. So, you know, I can understand that it's heavy for somebody on, on, on Prospect Street, or sitting on that hill down there, but you could, probably already got something of a smaller, hm, full, and bring it out there and dump it there, and, and, and let the toter stay right within the side of the road.
Oh, boy.
And, and I just.
I don't know if that makes sense, I'm not gonna tell nobody.
Cans, but, you know.
But, but, I, I'm a little offended, though, and I, I don't believe in Crescent City. I lived here with a bunch of old in-laws. I mean, I think the average age now here in Crescent City, if I'm not mistaken, I have to look it up, is around forty-nine, fifty-two. And yes, we do have a senior group, but every time we talk about this stuff, it sounds like all of Crescent City can't, is physically unable to push a toter, and I, I just, I understand people that cannot, but I wish that you wouldn't lump all of Crescent City into that group that can. Because I think more can than can, and that's my opinion.
Okay, do we have any further public comment?
Yeah.
You might wanna stay, Daniel, you might.
Can I finish my first, do you know?
I'm so sorry, Scott.
Well, actually, this is a little bit more. So, uh, this is a five-year contract?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what's the chance of in a year, man, we're hating it, that we come back and say, ma'am, we need to, we need to renegotiate, or do we need to kinda stick on our five-year plan?
Five-year contract.
Five-year contract, so, so it's a five-year decision?
Well, here's the thing.
No, that's not true, that we're not happy.
No, y'all can, y'all, you can, I can.
Oh, no, that's what, yeah, we, we come back to you as an innocent worker.
We, we can come back and say, hey, this is not working.
And these will not go into effect, and you can't even get.
Well, the, the, the new contract is, goes into effect a toter first, but this is taking so long to get to this point today. The cans have to be ordered, they have to be made, they have to be shipped, and then they have to be delivered. And then they have to be delivered down here.
And then we're gonna have to do the implementation.
Yeah, so we're, you know, this isn't an overnight project, this is a, you know.
You don't have two thousand toters sitting up there black? Thank you.
I don't have any black to them.
Do we have any further comment? Rachel, if you want to come forward, please.
I'm sorry, I just have a couple of questions. Rachel Kavanaugh, five oh five Magnolia Avenue. Um, I just wanna know how my toter would be different than my neighbor's, what would stop them from just coming, like, there's breaks, they just come and take mine? Do we have a, are we gonna put the Crescent City, like, logo on the toter with our street number and name? I also have, it was mentioned about the backyard service, that if somebody wanted to have that, that it would be a fee, would it be in the contract that there would definitely not be a fee applied to these residents?
A backdoor service is for dissing people.
Right, right, so they would have to do an application process, that would have to be affirmed, and then.
Contact my office and send over basically.
I remember a couple of years ago, they said that there was a fee applied to those residents, would there be a fee applied?
I don't know.
There could be, they, some, some communities have had that, they have that option, that they have the fee?
I just would prefer the contract act, like, definitely say, like, if we're having a backyard service fee, that it would be X amount of money in, in addition to that.
Dana used that as an example, one community, and it wasn't between Waste Pro and this, this community, it was between the community and the residents, and I think that was the twenty-five dollars she was referring to, that it was more of an administrative fee that they, that they were, that they offered, so, we as a.
They do it now free, you do it now free?
Yeah, they do it now for free.
In my particular neighborhood, there's quite a lot of, like, trash around people's trash cans. Like, after the garbage is picked up, there's a lot of trash around. Would the toters help that, or would it hinder it? Like, because the toters themselves get dumped into another apparatus, and then that gets dumped into the truck?
Yeah, it gets dumped straight into the truck.
I just wonder if that was gonna cause more.
So in theory, anything that's in there is gonna go into the truck, which will save a lot, because I would say probably half of the city, their cans are bottomed or not, so, that's part of the reason. That's part of the reason why there's trash on the road, because when you guys pick it up, it just falls out the bottom.
Okay. Uh, well, to be fair to the elderly and the people that can't move the toters, I was just wanting to make sure that that fee was stipulated in the contract, like, in the on-letters.
Okay. And also, if you want to, you had a question about if somebody took yours.
Right, what would it cost eight by between other residents?
They would, Daniel would show up?
Yes.
Like, mine was fine, and then the next day it's not, but my neighbor's looks fine, but it wasn't yesterday.
Some people actually paint like their, you know, they just put their number at the top.
Oh, would that make them just as ugly as the other trash cans? I'm, I'm like, you know, they're feeding your, you know, your oldie toter that looks so pretty.
Well, you could put flowers or something.
Everybody gets a flower sign on their toter?
If it walks off and it disappears, you know, then.
It's just going sailing now.
Provision.
I would say thank you, thank you very much.
I'd say if it walks off, or somebody steals it, or whatever, there's provision made for another one to be delivered. I've already spoke with the city manager and the mayor, you know, about staging some down here with the assistance of Keith and Public Works, you know. Because I'm in forty-five minutes or an hour away, one way, depending on traffic. You know, if somebody calls up and their cans are good, you know, and they need another one, swap them out, and we'll just come down here once a month or whatever, and pick up all the bad ones and fix them and replace them. It's a continuous thing, so.
And they'll break, and then when they break, as long as it's, you know, they haven't been vandalized or abused by the actual homeowner, you replace those too, correct?
You replace them anytime of the day.
Okay, so, just to clarify, if your trash can breaks during the time between the new one being delivered, you can't have your trash picked up unless you use your neighbor's trash can?
No, who said that?
I would say I would break to a point where you couldn't put your trash in it before we can get you a whole one. I mean, if you call a day and say it's broken, Keith has fifteen down here, he can probably get you one delivered today.
Okay, so it would be the same day replaced?
I would assume. I mean, I think if something happened and you made a call, the city called at four forty-five, it might be the next morning. But, I mean.
Ms. Sykes, you said you, you needed to say something, I'm gonna allow you.
I'm, I'm just, just going to give Mr. West. Diane Sykes, Village Crescent Street. Yes, I did get the petition signed by people who I knew wanted trash cans versus toters, but I was going nowhere, nor, and I, I also have a sheet for those who prefer.
That's not my point, my point is, your view, you talk to them about it, and say this isn't good, sign this petition.
I guess it's, um.
No, I asked them.
No, no.
No, well, you know, I read the.
Okay, so I'm gonna, at this point in time, do we have any further public comment? And then I'm closing public comment.
I don't think it's fair. Don't care how many senior citizens are in this town, seventeen, fifteen to seventeen hundred people. It doesn't matter how many are here, if it's the biggest percent or the smallest percent. You have to consider them. You have to consider age, because I hope you all get as old as me. You cannot physically do it. As for the list, or people that don't, that you're saying that she said they said it, I was sick, or I would have done the list too. You don't tell people, you ask them, you inform them. They're not here, because maybe they can't be here.
They can call city, oh, I don't want one opinion.
No, I would know this meeting was here tonight, and maybe they can be known as here. So that's not fair to say, why aren't they here? The real reason, a lot of people don't come is because it's too warm, it interferes with their lives, not that they don't want to.
But they can call and say, I don't like it.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any further public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth Gomez Lopez, nineteen Cedar Street, and I'm being a good wife, and my husband told me if he could not make it, to please ask this question. He just told me, and I don't know if this is a fact, that the capital here in this town is fifteen thousand per household, I don't know. And then he told me, can you please ask them if the people that want the trash can pay for that service, and the older people that don't want it stay out of it with the old trash cans? Or it all has to be locked out? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with either or.
Yeah, it's one or the other, this truck has to be outfitted.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a big capital on that.
Okay, with that, any other public comment? Seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna close public comment. Commissioners, we have a motion for option two, which is two-day, uh, two-day-a-week pickup with a toter, and also yard waste once a week, and we have a proper second, so. All right, any further discussion? If not, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna take.
I have one thing to say. The one thing I didn't say before is what Pat Langdon said. I think we have to consider everyone, and I do not feel that we are doing that. It's not what we think looks cute or pretty. I don't think we took enough time with this, and we are not considering everyone.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm gonna ask for a roll call. Karen, if you'll do a roll call. All in favor, say aye when she calls your name. All opposed, say nay when they call, when she calls your name.
Commissioner Barton?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Nay.
Mary Myers?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to that date for the natural gas workshop.
Yes, uh, Mayor, we, you recall, we had a, a brief workshop during the budget process from the natural gas, Florida, Florida Gas, talking about purchasing in bulk. We would come back to you, they now have a presentation they wanna make about how we could save money by sort of predicting the price and purchasing that way, so we'd want to set up a date when they could come in and make that presentation to you.
Okay, well, are you having dates they've given you that you're looking at?
Uh, he did, actually, it was late October, we checked that.
I have, every Thursday in October is full right now. Well, no, it's not. I take that back. Twenty-seventh might be open. Does anybody, you got your calendar?
Every Thursday. Two, two Tuesday.
Would you prefer it on the day?
He's free October eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, or the following week, the twenty-five, twenty-sixth, or twenty-seventh.
Okay, the twenty-fifth, we are, um, we're gonna be in Tallahassee on the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-seventh is the candidate forum.
Yeah, candidate forum. I knew there was something on the twenty-seventh.
Is this the candidate? Yes, it was called.
And I believe also, just as we're looking at that, the candidate forum, I believe Ted Smith, our property appraiser, is going, I believe he's gonna say he's gonna be there to speak. We have a couple of in legislation there, for widower and widow, widowers and widows. And then also for, um, first responders and, um, our teachers with property taxes. So I think he's gonna give a presentation, so everybody just wanted to throw that out there.
The twenty-seventh?
So is, is that the, the better of the two weeks? It would be the twenty-sixth then?
Um, yeah, I could do it, I could do it the twenty-sixth.
That's on Wednesday?
Yes.
So it could be in the...
Church night. You got church night, that's right.
Late time? What time?
Um, actually, you didn't stipulate the time.
The eighteenth, I mean, um, I, what about the eighteenth? The Tuesday, the eighteenth?
I want to be here.
So the twenty, would you be here the twentieth? Or you'd be out the twen- would you be here the twentieth? The only thing is, the twentieth, I've got to be in St. Augustine at five o'clock. So it would have to be during the day.
We could do it two o'clock on one of those days. Didn't even matter the night things that we talked about.
Okay.
The twenty-seventh.
Why don't we just ruin that week and make it the twenty-sixth at two o'clock? And just keep a, keep a nice, clean week in case I'm alcohol or loophole.
That's right.
Charles, you might wanna consider what Commissioner Barton is saying, because we're painting that week, remember? And the fumes might still be in the room.
Which week? The eighteen?
The seventeenth. They, they come in on the seventeenth.
So how about, uh, two o'clock on the twenty-sixth? Wednesday, the twenty-sixth?
Can you do it to a block?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Does that work with everybody's calendar? Commissioner DeVito, you got that? It's good for yours?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And the other thing would be, if you wanted to go ahead and schedule the next continuation of the minimum maintenance workshop.
I can't wait for that.
Okay, when will we wanna do that?
I could do it daytime as well.
I could do it, um, probably that first, that first week in October, uh, up until the sixth. How's everybody else's calendar look for that?
First week of October.
Do it at two o'clock on the fifth?
That'd be fine. A lot on this day.
No, you, it'd be dead.
Okay. Does that work with everybody? Commissioner DeVito, that will figure your schedule as well?
Start? Yes, that should work. Two P L on the fifth.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Bobby, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I have to do some that's not easy and not fun, but I do think it's necessary. At the last meeting, um, I quoted a state statute that, oh, beautiful, so I can't even speak. So it was Florida statute one-one-two-three-one-three, subsection three, doing business with one's agency. After looking at it further, it just prevents, uh, basically if you rent or sell to the city, not if you're renting from the city. So I've already contacted Mr. Bailey. I spoke to him yesterday and explained, um, that there was not a state statute preventing him from doing that. He's out of town, so he couldn't be here tonight. So I just told him that there was no statute preventing it. Uh, obviously, I wouldn't give him permission to do that over there, but for him to contact the city, uh, to see how the city wanted to move forward. So I just wanted to, and what's your recommendation as our attorney? The recommendation is still that I believe that if we're gonna run city property, which is the RFP, that's published, so it's equal opportunity for anybody that wanted to use it. I just wanted to clear that up, that there was not a state statute that was preventing of Mr. Bailey from doing that up until if he were to get elected, then there is. But not right now.
But when he gets elected, there would be.
If he got elected, there would be.
Okay.
And I told him, cause I had wanted to find it out secondhand, so I called him yesterday and explained it to him.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you. And on the RFP, so we would, so definitely we would have to put out an RFP over there.
Generally, you've gotta provide us one of equal opportunity to have the same, uh, same few opportunities.
Okay, I have a question about that. We have an RFP up there. The property has been for sale for years. I'm not quite understanding, um, when you have an RFP, when you have a property open for sale, so if someone wants to lease it, you have to tailor an RFP to what he's doing?
Uh, no, I think it'd be like one we sent out for the Sonic Lodge.
Come again?
We would have to do an RFP to give everybody an oppor- opportunity. That if they wanted to do something on that, if they wanted to do, um, a food truck on that corner, we would have to give everyone that opportunity with an RFP, right?
Correct. Our, our RFP, what we have out is for development of the site, not for temporary rental, um, exclusive.
Unless you have a different copy. Do you have, do you have a copy of the RFP that you can share?
No, but I'm, I'm just saying it seems, um, I mean, the property is there. It was for sale. There's an RFP for development. Nobody has bitten. I mean, to me, it's kind of a distinction without a difference to say if he wants to make a proposal that we can't entertain that. We would entertain a proposal from anyone, would we not?
I, I think we oughta take this offline and, and work this out, how we're supposed to do it. And, uh, it doesn't, doesn't need to be today. It's not part of our agenda.
It's not, but Bobby, thank you as part, as part of yours. But I, I will close with this in that, you know, if we were to allow, if we were to allow them to do that, and what happens if one other person came in and said, "Oh, wait a second, I wanted to do that." You know, we could get ourselves in a, in a, in a situation, so... Anyway, do you have anything else, Bobby? That's it? Okay, Commissioners, do we have anything?
I, I do. And I've spoken about this to, um, Mr. Rudd and to Bobby a couple of times. Somehow, it seems like there needs to be closer coordination when the agenda and the packet are being prepared between the city manager and the legal staff because, um, somehow the legal issues don't come up until the meeting. A number of the ordinances that have come before us have not been correct. We've had to, you know, make changes in the meetings. I felt particularly bad about Mr. Bailey. On our agenda, um, at the last meeting, there was a, uh, his proposal. We all read the packet. We took the time. He took the time to make the proposal. Um, and then it turned out at the very last minute, when he was stepping up to the podium, and I just hate to see a business person treated this way. I'm not saying I would have voted for it or not. I'm not saying anything.
Oh, 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 wait, wait a second. No, he, there was a conversation with Bobby and Charles prior to the meeting, so he wasn't caught by surprise. And they made it very clear that they did not want him caught by surprise. Based on what Bobby, his interpretation. Is that correct, Bobby?
Yeah, I just, I pulled him outside before the meeting, cause I didn't want him to do that.
Okay, well, somehow, we, we weren't told that for one, okay, but my original point stands. When the agenda was prepared and the packet was prepared, all the Commissioners read the proposal. So what I'm saying is, it came to the day of the meeting. Um, and the item wasn't pulled from the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. It was pulled when the agenda item was announced. So, and it turns out...
That's my fault. I should have pulled it. Next time I'll be more cognizant of that.
Right, but it, it turns out that, um, the issue, that it, he was able to do that, although now there's another requirement. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that somehow we just need to have a tighter review because we're, we're getting a lot of mistakes and...
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else?
Now, can I say this?
Yes, sir.
We all are human beings, and we gonna make errors. So let them jump on somebody something because of some error, error. We all agree. Everybody making mistakes. That's why forgiveness is before us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bobby, thank you very much. That, that was, um, I know that was difficult for you.
No, no, I can sit here and tell you that there's nobody in this room that feels worse for what happened than me, because I'm the one that did it and I was wrong.
And you loved that too. I appreciate it.
But as soon as I figured it out, and even I'll go ahead and say some of it was from Commissioner DeVito that brought it to my attention, looked at it again, and I just made mistakes. I rectified it as soon as I could.
Right, thank you.
Mayor, I, I have something else to say. I, I know that everyone makes mistakes, and I think that, um, our city attorney is the stand-up guy because he brought it to us and he explained it to us. And actually, this is a very difficult section of the law. It's, it's written in a very obtuse way, and it's hard to understand. And, um, I wasn't sure. In fact, my, the point is, and this is important for all of us, in our process and the public and how we go forward, saying it's about the process and the communication between, um, the city staff and the city attorney. Somehow, these things need to get more of a review much earlier. Um, and as well, for example, um, I would say that, um...
Commissioner DeVito, you need to wrap it up. I'm about to close. I'm ready to close the meeting now.
Okay, well...
Well, you've said, you've stated this several times, so I think we all get the gist of what you're saying.
Okay, so another issue would be, we went through the minimum maintenance standards, and it turns out that was a very generic ordinance, um, for anywhere in the United States or internationally. That would have benefited us and the public to have, and again, this is process. It's not that everyone doesn't work hard, but it would benefit us to have that reviewed ahead of time. The parts, we spent a lot of time discussing the parts that don't apply to Crescent City. We worried the people in the audience. We created, um, some unnecessary angst. Uh, we could have moved through it a little quicker with a different process.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'm going to, um, do I, can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, do I get a second?
One second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
I need to adjourn. Thank you very much.